We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Tuesday, September 6, 2022, to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here.
If you will, please let us all stand together as our county attorney will lead us in prayer, and it will be followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Lord, your word tells us that you give strength to the weary and you increase the power of the weak. You are our place to go when we are empty and our second wind when we are worn down. How do you restore the weary warrior? If we wait on you, you will refill us. If we look to you, you will guide us. If we listen to you, you will lead us. You make broken wings sore and weak legs sprint. King David often calls you a fortress. You are a place of rest and peace no matter what comes to our gates. Strengthen us today, God, as we acknowledge you, and be our fortress of peace when we run to you. We proclaim these things in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We welcome each of you here to the Board of Commissioners meeting this evening, and to those may be viewing online, we welcome you also. We would ask that if you're in attendance this evening, you have your cell phones, to please let us make sure they don't vibrate so they would not disrupt this meeting this evening. Commissioners, you have there before you your agenda. Are there any items you desire to add or remove from tonight's agenda?
Make a motion. We approve the agenda as is.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Is any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next item we have is the petition of citizens for agenda topics. Mr. Vice Chair, we have anyone?
We have no one.
Okay. All right, we go to item two, which is your consent agenda. Commissioners, it's a long one. I'm going to read over it. The minutes of the July 29 reconvened session and the minutes of the August 1 regular session, tax releases and refunds, sheriff's fiscal year 2022, international paper grant under the sheriff, you have a K-9 donation rollover also, convention center point of sale, square cash registers, budget amendment, recreation and parks. You have help for the WIC funding, help for enhancing detection activity state funding budget amendment. Also, military service person of the quarter resolution, a resolution supporting operation green light for veterans, and a proclamation in recognition of Mrs. Elizabeth Justine Wetherington-Wiggins. Are any items you desire to pull from tonight's consent?
Make a motion to a consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you. On departmental matters this evening, the first item we have is emergency services. We have with us Mr. Stanley Kite. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here before you today. I have before you a request for Craven County Advanced Rescue Squad to enter into an agreement, a lease agreement for permitted ambulance to be utilized by Craven County EMS. The agreement would provide the legal requirements under North Carolina General Statute 131 for Craven County to maintain their local office of emergency medical services ambulance provider certificate. This agreement is similar to one we have with Carolina East Medical Center, but it is not in lieu of that. This is the second or an additional ambulance we would like to have in order. And I'm requesting you to authorize the chairman, county manager, to enter into the agreement. As specified, you should have copies of that agreement. And also, Advanced Rescue Squad has already provided us with a certificate of title for the vehicle that is under consideration.
All right, are there any questions first for Mr. Kite?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement with Advanced Rescue Squad. Any discussion on the motion? I would just say, Stanley, if you will, on behalf of the board, please relate to them my sincere appreciation for their cooperation, continued cooperation in this effort. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item four is Sheriff Chip Hughes. We have a number of items this evening. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman. Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to come before. You've got a number of things we want to go over. A lot of them is just rollover stuff and grant related. The first would be the vehicle price increase on the 2022 Chargers. Important thing, we placed an order for these Chargers over a year ago, and it's taken that long. Some of them we still haven't got yet, but there was a price increase from when we got the original quote and issued the PO versus now just getting them. So we can't take delivery on these until we pay the difference, which was $2,228 per vehicle over what we originally were quoted over a year ago. So the difference is 22,950 is what we'll be asking for with this amendment.
All right, are there any questions from Sheriff on this item?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, Sheriff, just for the benefit of the audience, we don't negotiate this price. This is a state negotiated price. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We piggyback on the state's contract.
Or the Sheriff's Association contract pricing. So it's the set price. However, every year they go, and when you can't take delivery, that's how we got the overdoing.
I just wanted, for the benefit of the audience, to know that we don't do that negotiation.
It's contracted pricing.
And it's a very good price.
Very good.
By comparison of what a retail price would be.
Yes, sir.
Very good price. Thank you.
Additional discussion? All right, the motion is to approve the budget amendment in amount of $22,950. Here no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, item B.
Yes, sir. The next one, this is going to be a rollover, a grant rollover from a grant we got from the state legislators for $250,000. We used a good portion of this money to purchase four trucks. Unfortunately, we've gotten three of them. There's still one that we're waiting on, and these trucks were, once again, on state contract purchasing, and it's been quite some time since we placed the order. One of them is still outstanding, so we'll be asking that the amount to cover that truck will be rolled over and also to cover additional cost in the form of $84,171, which is what's left in that grant.
All right, any questions?
So moved.
Approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in amount of $84,171. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, C.
Yes, sir. This is going to be another rollover from a fiscal year 2022 grant that we received. It's a JAG grant through Governor's Crime Commission. Once again, we've got equipment that we have ordered, we haven't received yet. We're looking to rollover $18,309. This grant money is used to purchase less lethal equipment that we'll be using in place of deadly force if opportunity presents itself. So we're still waiting on this equipment to come in.
All right, any questions? Here none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in amount of $18,309. Commissioner Smith?
Have you? I know that there's been delays on everything.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any time that you expect in this equipment? You have no clue as it just comes when it comes?
Yeah, unfortunately, I could be here next year this time asking for another rollover. Just a lot of its backlog, and then it's still from the COVID stuff is what's caused all this.
Thank you. All right, any additional questions? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right.
E. The last one is a grant that we were awarded from North Carolina Department of Public Safety and the legislators. It was in House Bill 105. In the last session, we're asking that the $84,270 be rolled over from 2022. This, once again, we're purchasing vest. There's another, a good amount of other public safety equipment that we're purchasing. Once again, just waiting for the equipment to come in.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. County Manager.
Just for the record, Sheriff, there's also a Dodge Charger in this account, I believe, sir.
Yes, sir. We did that just based on our conversation during budget. That was one less vehicle that we would be asking for.
Yes, sir.
All right, so this is in this budget amendment in amount of $84,270. All right, any additional questions? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, and then the last one you have there is the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program.
Yes, sir.
And that is for the approval for a $25,000 grant, just asking for approval and sign the resolution.
Yes, sir.
All right, any discussion?
So moved.
Approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, Sheriff, you got anything to share with us this evening?
Very busy weekend. Call volume was very high, and that was just the amount of traffic that we had coming through Craven County going to and from the beach. But other than that, it was a good weekend for us. Yes, sir.
Sheriff, I had a request, a question that I couldn't answer the other day, and that was our deputy that got wounded, what, more than a year ago?
Yes, sir.
His progress and how he's doing?
You know, he is progressing. He's still in physical therapy. Just really, you know, it's now it's the challenge of learning to live in a wheelchair. He has got a vehicle, and, you know, we're working with him on finding a place to live that will be suitable for his mobility needs. His spirits are very high. He has not been cleared to come back to work in any capacity right now, but we do have a place for him when that time is right. And, but he is, we are talking with him very, very often, and like I said, he's in very high spirits. But thank you for.
Any other questions for the sheriff? All right, thank you for what you do. Appreciate you being here. All right, next item is the Soil and Water Conservation Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program. How you doing, Mr. Baker?
Very good. All right, so I'd like to go ahead and start out with this PowerPoint, if we could do that, and talk about, let's see, that's a very little. It's a stream debris removal, but this is a different funding source. This is one that the state has recently, last year approved. It's called the North Carolina Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program. The next one now, $38 million was allocated to the North Carolina Department of Agriculture for this program. It provides grant funding for projects to reduce flooding and restore integrity of North Carolina's waterways. Right now, the eligible projects are vegetative debris removal, in-stream sediment removal, stream bank stabilization, stream restoration, and other repair needs such as culvert replacements. Go to the next one. Now, the difference in this funding and what we've had in the past, our past funding has been disaster recovery, and that's where this is different. Our previous disaster recovery, it was all reactive following the storm. We always had to wait until it was, the storm came, the money was approved, and then we'd go out and do that. And it was for clearing debris in the waterways after flooding events or larger storm events, whereas strap funding, this is proactive. It's for flood reduction and prevention and clearing debris in the waterways before the next storm or flooding event in hopes to reduce flooding and protect property that We here in Craven County, we applied for this program at $2 million, and we were awarded $388,939 for implementing this program. Now, some other differences with our disaster funding, the extracted debris had to be pulled back at least 20 feet from the stream bank and deposited, we tried to deposit it on the side that it originated from. With this new strap funding, the extracted debris must be removed from the 100-year floodplain or processed in such a manner that it will not pose a risk of re-entry and impairment of the stream flow during a subsequent storm event. Now, removing it from the 100-year floodplain is a big deal because here, some places, you go out, let's measure the 100-year floodplain. It may be 1.7 miles off to the side. So this is a pretty big deal, something different than what we've ever dealt with before. Now, when it says "or processed in such a manner that it won't basically float back in," there are allowable methods of processing include cabling. This is when the debris is deposited within the 100-year floodplain, a minimum of 30 feet back from the bank, and it's anchored to living trees by attaching cable or appropriately sized rope to the debris and securing it to the living tree. And, of course, each individual piece would have to be wrapped with some type of cable or rope. Another option is burning. There's piled on the adjoining land and burned, and then mulching, where the debris is mulched with a wood chipper and deposited on the adjoining land. None of these options are real good. As of right now, our plan is to look at removing it from the floodplain, trying to float it out to a landing where we can remove it and it be disposed of off-site. But now that is dependent on prices. Price makes us to need to go back to a different method. So we identified, one of our first places we identified was, of course, Swift Creek. And we're looking at Swift Creek as a 2.9-mile section between Highway 118 and Butler Ford. Now, we recently, back in January of this year, we finished doing Swift Creek, cleaning Swift Creek as a result of disaster recovery funds. So why are we going back into Swift Creek again? Go to the next slide. Swift Creek has a, it is kind of plagued with issues relating to floating debris. It comes down, it comes from Pitt County, all upstream areas, and once it catches on one thing, it'll cause a major, it'll just keep building up. This is an example of a tree down in Swift Creek. Looks innocent enough, it's just a tree. All right, now, go to the next one. Now, behind it, what you see here, this is accumulation of floating debris, trees, limbs, bottles, trash. And what that does, the next floating debris, it keeps adding to it, adding to it, and after a while, it's pretty much the consistency of a beaver dam. And it just grows and grows. These are some other examples of floating debris. Go ahead to the next one. And this is after our inspections of it after the storm. Now, at Highway 118 Bridge, this is where it converts from a channelized stream to natural creek, and this is our equivalent of a log jam down here. I can tell you in January, flip to the next slide, it just shows you kind of, now, this is going to do nothing but get worse and worse and worse, and it's right at the bridge. So none of this was here in January. My coworker, Brody, and I floated right through here, came through here with the boat, and none of that was there. And then you come back in April, and it's appeared. Wow. I'll go to the next slide. Now, this is what, this is standing on the bridge looking downstream into natural creek part. This is what it's supposed to look like after it's been cleaned out. Now, let's go to the next slide, and that's after all that debris is piled up. See, that looks just like a beaver dam. It's not. It's just floating accumulated debris, and it's just going to get worse and worse. So this is why we picked this section of creek, Swift Creek, and this particular section. All right? Of course, we've got a timeline, a projected timeline to complete this project, some of our key dates that we're working towards. And right now, we're in the process of receiving, we've sent out right-of-entry and hold harmless agreements to landowners that's on this creek, saying this is what we want to do and having their, yes?
I didn't mean to cut you off. I just was raising my hand so that you knew that I had a question.
Okay.
Go ahead and finish.
Go ahead and finish.
Go ahead and finish.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, this is our timeline. Right now, we have sent out letters to the landowners that touch this section of creek, explaining to them what we want to do, what our goals are, plans are, and we're slowly receiving them back. I got a call from one today. He wanted a little bit more detail on it, so told him that. And so we are looking at starting construction. That is still to be determined, but it's going to be, if everything works right, we'd be looking at around the December timeframe is what we're thinking. And I think that's the last slide.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
I see the value in what you're doing, certainly. However, my question is, when you have a creek like that and you have a low area, do you have included in this process building up the banks to keep the land near it from flooding? Is any build up in, anybody see where I'm going with this?
Well, we don't have anything for building it up. Now, we do have, if there's any places along that bank that's eroded or starting, where it's eroding and putting sediment into the stream, we can stabilize that and restore that.
I see.
And if there's an accumulation of sediment buildup, we can remove that now.
Patrick?
Yes, sir. You know, we started this program many years ago in the disaster, and it has had good effects during these storms in that they didn't get as flooded as they would have. But this is the first time the state has come along, because I've spoken to the state and two people here heard me, that if we had the Army Engineers clean out the Noose River from up where it starts to where it ends, that we would, all those contributaries, we would probably have a lot less flooding on our highways. And this is the first time they've recognized that I have seen that they've gone that far.
Yes.
And it's something that I will bring up at the next Highway 70 meeting.
All right, additional. Commissioner Liner?
Patrick, thanks for bringing this forward and everything else, but I think we all have to remember, Tom, this started under your watch.
That's correct.
Because during Florence, we were the only county in this state that had a program that was cleaning our streams. Nobody upstream, nobody downstream, nobody other counties had this program on it. So I think at all of our meetings we went to after Florence and during Florence, they heard what we had to say, and I think this is generated from that.
Hopefully.
From that. I mean, we didn't get what we wanted, but they've recognized the value of cleaning them out before and even afterwards. So, I mean, we should, the board should be commended for what it's done in the past because this is, what, our eighth year? And we funded it before. I mean, when it initially started, we took it out of general fund and did it. And then it started growing, and we got disaster money and kept it going, and we still had money put into it. We still have money put in and out for general fund for beaver control and everything else. So I think the state's really realizing now, and the cost is going to be involved, we got to keep the streams open and flowing if we're not going to flood ourselves out.
Let's hope so. I commend you, Patrick.
I do, too.
You've really done a great job.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Additional questions? Mr. County Manager?
Patrick, just for the board's knowledge, in previous projects where you didn't have the 100-year floodplain rule, what was it approximately per mile?
We were averaging about $2 a foot.
$2 a foot?
$2 a foot.
So with the removing it from the floodplain, what does that do to the price?
We don't know yet. That's why we're going to have to put it out, but I suspect even this section that we've got here, just, we could have to even shorten that back.
I mean, just ballpark, you think $50 a foot?
Probably $50 a foot. Now that you said that, that is exactly about the price that we came.
Right, so we went from, you know, and so what you got to remember, we've done hundreds of miles in previous projects.
Right.
We're doing three miles. So a lot of the impact, while it is bad, Patrick, a lot of the impact's because you've got to barge this stuff out, float it out, then haul it and dispose of it, and there's a cost to all of that that you have to now put in the project. And the cabling system, where they allow you to attach it to a living tree, requires homeowner participation, whether or not they're going to allow you to cable debris all on their property.
Exactly.
And, of course, burning's burning, right? I mean, there's some places that you can, some you can't.
That's right.
So the challenge for us is going to be, are we ever going to get back to the scope, maybe the reactive approach? Are we ever going to get back to that scope versus smaller?
I agree.
Additional questions?
Well, I think something, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I think that's something this board needs to take up with our local leaders, that this, I mean, we need to compare what we did for 20 feet and now what we're comparing for 100 feet and the requirements for being proactive instead of being reactive. I mean, I commend them for giving us the money, but the challenge is to meet the requirements they put on it, the cost. I mean, if it was all right to put before, under the storm conditions, to go 20 feet, it should be all right now. So I think this board needs to get with our local leaders and get them to change this and go back to the way we've had it, we've always had it. It doesn't make sense. I mean, I don't think they realize what it really means to take this stuff out.
Yeah. Exactly. George, the state is a resilient, see, study in hand. The problem is, with any study, it takes two to three years.
Yeah.
And my question is, how do we handle the next storm?
Well, I don't, I don't think this is going to apply to the next storm because the next storm is under the old system, correct? The 20-foot.
Basically. We don't, we don't know that yet.
Don't know that yet.
Yeah.
Right now, the new one doesn't say it doesn't. I mean, we're assuming, but that's a big word.
Right.
So, yeah, I agree with you, Tom.
Vice Chair Booker? Patrick, you said one of the options was to burn.
Yes.
And obviously, you're choosing not to do that. Could you elaborate on that?
Harsh fires and liability. Just something getting out of control, and then, you know, that being a county project, and we've burned up some of a warehouse's timber in somebody else's land and got over in somebody's house, so it's strictly for liability.
And Commissioner Booker, some of the places where he would have to burn would be very remote and difficult to get to if you did have an issue. I mean, I think, Patrick, you gave an example of 1.7 miles from a floodplain to, so it'd be a challenge.
Commissioner Liner, you made a comment about talking to our legislative delegation. Last week, I had the opportunity to have a meeting with Senator Perry, Jack and I did, also North Carolina Soil and Water Conservation, and it's an issue that has been addressed across the state of the concern that counties have. And, you know, it really, at the end of the day, the system that we've had has worked. In my opinion, this is a waste of taxpayers' dollars to do what they're requiring you to do now. We are doing a maintenance on all of these thoroughfares now, and the cost of doing, as it was stated, $2 a foot to go through there, is minimum of what we're, as far as the maintenance that we're having to do. This one hasn't been done before, correct?
You're talking about?
Yeah, well, the parts you're going to do.
Yes, it has been.
It has been done.
Mm-hmm.
So where are you talking about taking, how are you going to, where are you going to barge it out at? You going to 118?
Talking about going right now, going to Butler Ford Road?
There at the bridge?
There's a little, yeah, just a little land in there.
Yeah.
Talking about going out there, and the plan's right now to dispose of it at landfill.
Okay. All right, Jack, the only thing, before we entertain a motion, not to labor on this any longer, but we have discussed this a little bit in the past, and did we ever formally as a board pass any type of resolution or letter to be sent to the delegation asking that this rule be looked at and changed?
I don't believe we have, sir.
Okay, I think it might be appropriate to hear enough concern about it, if we might bring it back at our next meeting, and let's put it in a formal letter and address it to all of our delegation.
Okay.
If that's okay. All right, Commissioners, you have this before you approving the contract and also the budget amendment of $388,939.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and second, any further discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynam?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you did. Next item we have is planning. We have with us Mr. Don Baumgartner and Mr. Chad Strong. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. We have two items here for your consideration this evening. The first is a road addition request, so that roads in this subdivision, Lynwood Highlands subdivision, can be added to the state maintenance system. We've received a petition, and the three roads are Palisades Way, Tutu Court, and El Vadeer Court. Once the resolution, that the standard SR2 resolution is passed, it will be forwarded to the state for their final consideration and acceptance of the roads into the state's maintenance system. These roads at this time are eligible for addition.
All right, any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the standard SR2 road addition resolution. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right, B.
The next item is the Bullock-Williams subdivision. It is a piece of property located out off Streets Ferry Road. It is owned by three individuals, two of them having the last name Janet Bullock, Jonathan Williams, and Troy Williams. The surveying was done by Robert Childs Engineering. Again, it was on Streets Ferry Road. It contains approximately three lots on 14.05 acres. The property is to be served by county water and individual septic systems. The property itself is relatively narrow, is part of a air division that occurred, and as a result of it, it is a lot different than what you normally see in a standard subdivision. However, they do meet all of the requirements. There were some easements across the property, and we ask that those be recognized so that in the event other properties are developed, they'll be able to continue to gain access to and from the property.
All right, Commissioner Mark, this is your district.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, I got a second. Any further discussion in approving the resolutions for the Bullock-Williams final? Here no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
One additional item, and I'm going to refer to Jack on this one, did you want?
Yes.
Would you introduce?
Yes.
Our new engineer there?
I was going to do it during the manager's report, Don.
Okay, but we'll, during the manager's report, Jack will introduce one of our new employees. All right.
Thank you, Don, appreciate it. All right, next item is health, Mr. Scott Harrelson. Is Mr. Harrelson out there? Mr. Hodges?
Scott?
Yep.
Scott?
Scott.
Good evening, sir.
You had a card game going?
Thank you, gentlemen.
We got three items before us this evening, Mr. Harrelson. I think the first one on the agenda is the Health Department new fees.
Yes, sir. We have fees from the clinic side and also one from environmental health. The first one is a new fee for a replacement vaccine. It's a pneumococcal vaccine for Prevnar 20, which is replacing Prevnar 13, and, let's see, the proposed rate, the Medicaid rate on that is 239.19, and the proposed rate is 247.
All right, are there any questions, Mr. Harrelson, over the new fees? Here none, questions? I have a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the new fees. Are there any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right, B.
Thank you, and all of these were passed through and approved by the Board of Health before bringing to you this evening. The next is alpha fetoprotein, which is a test for spinobifida, and the contact lab that we were using is no longer doing it, so now we're going to have to submit to LabCorp. And the Medicaid rate is $21.33, proposed rate's $22.
All right, and if you want to, go ahead, if it's all right, and let's just handle the rest of these fees, too.
Yes, sir.
Just finish them out.
Right. All right, and the next up would be Quantiferon TB Gold Plus, which is a serum test for TB rather in lieu of the skin test. Medicaid rate is $78.80, proposed rate $79. And the last fee that we had is an environmental health fee. There was a rule change for permitting of temporary display spas, like hot tub spas, because of some things that had occurred at some displays in the state, and this law came about, so we are trying to establish a new fee for this as well, and that will be, that is the fees in total.
Okay, any questions?
No, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the remaining fees. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right.
Thank you. The next two items, B is enhancing detection activities for state funding, and this is a carryforward of some remaining COVID dollars in the amount of $503,113. And we are, or we will be receiving the updated COVID vaccine or the booster vaccine, which is geared more towards the latest variants, because the current vaccines are not keeping people from getting COVID, but hopefully these will.
Okay, any questions? Here none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the state funding in the amount of $503,113. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynam?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. The final agenda item is also a carryforward from the ARPA funding, from the American Rescue Plan Act. We received $1,605,250. Of that, we are requesting to carry forward a remainder of $784,513. And with this, we established, we paid for some clinical staff, and we've also established a 340B pharmacy, which I'll tell you is going very well, the reconstruction of what used to be our medical records room at the Health Department, and we hope to be serving people out of that maybe October, November timeframe.
Okay, any questions?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $784,513. Any further discussion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynam?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you for your support.
Appreciate it, Scott. Next item is IT, the courthouse wireless expansion. Mr. Bennett?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, in June, Craven County staff received a formal proposal from the administrative offices of the court requesting the installation of new network cables for wireless access points to be installed later this year. Due to the amount of work required, the IT department, as well as Facilities Department, believes that an outside contractor is best suited for completing the project. Staff compared quotes provided by AOC's vendors with two others and selected InterSource as the lowest qualified vendor. The cost of the project is approximately $18,000. A copy of the Wireless Survey and Design Report is available at the county manager's office, and where this document contains a description of the characteristics unique to the site and context to the APs, the board has requested to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $18,000.
All right, any questions for Mr. Bennett?
No, so moved.
Moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the budget amendment in the amount of $18,000. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynam?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Steve. All right, item nine is facilities, the lease renewal of the Veterans Services Office. Mr. Hodges?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Board. In October of 2016, Craven County entered into a three-year lease with Tyson &amp; Hines Investments LLC for an office building located 2402 ML King Jr. Boulevard in New Bern to house the Veterans Services Office. This lease was extended for an additional three years in April 2019 at a term of $2,100 per month. The original lease agreement and the current memorandum of lease was included in your packets. After negotiating with the owner, the county has been offered a 10-year lease term at a rate of $2,500 per month from November 1, 2022, to October 31, 2025, $2,750 per month from November 1, 2025, to October 31, 2028, and $3,000 per month from November 1, 2028, to October 31, 2032. Additionally, the county is permitted to make modifications, specifically an updated handicap ramp, to accommodate our use of the building. There was a draft lease renewal document, we worked with the county attorney to draft, was also included in your packet. Staff requests the board approve the renewal of the lease for the rate it's offered. Over the past six years, the public feedback has been overwhelmingly positive regarding the location, accessibility of the Veterans Services Office. Staff feels that we can continue to provide the superior service of the Veterans Services Office by maintaining this location. Staff requests that the board approve the terms related to the renewal of the lease for the Veterans Services Office, authorize staff to prepare and execute all necessary agreements, and approve a budget amendment in the amount of $3,200 that corresponds to the increased monthly rate for the remainder of the fiscal year 2022, 2023 fiscal year, which is $400 per month for eight months.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Hodges? Is there a get-out clause in this?
Yes, sir, there is an exit clause that is being written into the lease agreement.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the lease renewal, also to authorize staff to prepare and execute the agreement and approve a budget amendment in the amount of $3,200. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I think Gene did a great job of articulating, but just as a reminder, we do house Congressman Murphy's office in this building as well, which we've gotten positive feedback. The continuity between veterans and the congressional office, sometimes they're seeing the same client, so it's really worked great, and they're happy to be there, and they like the location as well.
All right, any further discussion? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynam?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, next item is appointments. We have pending, current, and upcoming appointments. You see there, pending appointments, are there any appointments pending that any Commissioners have? All right, here none, we will go to current. First one is the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Mr. Timothy Lawrence seeks reappointment. Is desire the board?
Make a motion.
All right, we have, Mr. Lawrence has been nominated. Do we have additional nominations? Here none, he will be accepted by acclamation. All right, next would be the EMS Service Board. We have the applicant, Mr. Benji, who seeks to fill the vacant seat left by John Britt. You do have in your agenda packet the application. Do we have any nominations?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have nomination for this individual. Are there additional nominations? Here none, we will accept by acclamation. Next would be the Craven County Planning Board, District 6. You have the name of Sharon Maron. All right, Commissioner Lynam made a motion. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none, we're set by acclamation. Next would be the Riverbend Planning Board. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, I'd like to recommend we reappoint.
Okay, Kelly Forrest has been nominated. Are there additional nominations? Here none, we're set by acclamation. Next would be this Community Child Protection Team. Since the agenda packets went out, we did receive a response from Ms. Knight, who does wish to continue to serve. Do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate.
Okay, we have nomination Ms. Knight. Are there any additional nominations? Here none, we're set by acclamation. Next would be the Craven County Clean Sweep. You have applicant Maynor, who seeks appointment, also Billy Wilks and David Cox, who seek reappointment. This is three seats, so we'll take the first one. Do we have a nomination?
I'll nominate.
Okay, do we have any additional nominations for this seat? Here none, set by acclamation. And then you have the two seats there for reappointment.
Recommend we reappoint.
Okay, we got recommendation for Mr. Wilks and Mr. Cox, additional nominations. Here none, we're set by acclamation. Next you have there the New Bern-Craven County Library Board. You have two applicants. This was a resignation. This would fill that unexpired term. You see the two applicants there before you, Jennifer and James. Do you have?
Mr. Chairman, I recognize Jennifer Guditis.
Okay, we had the nomination of Jennifer Guditis. You have additional nominations from the floor? Here none, we're set by acclamation. Okay, next would be the Havlock-Craven County Library Board. Mr. Sherman resigned. You have applications there before you. I would ask that we would table this, if the Commissioners would allow.
I second that.
Okay, hear any objection? We'll table Havlock Library Board. All right, are there any additional current appointments that we've overlooked? Here none, you have there before you upcoming terms expiring in October 2022, Fire Tax Commissioners, Fireman's Relief Fund, Craven County Rec. Board, and the Voluntary Ag District. All right, here nothing else out of appointments. We'll move on to item 11, the county attorney's report, Mr. Grady. Good evening, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. I have one item for your consideration this evening. It involves the sale of county-owned real estate acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The property is located at 612 Second Avenue. It is within the city of New Bern with a parcel ID number of 8-012-216. The metrics on this property, we have an offer in the amount of $2,022. The original cost of foreclosure and past due taxes were $11,188.33. The tax value of the property is $4,000, as the board is familiar from past experiences. This is a preliminary step. If the board accepts this offer, we'll advertise it for upset bids, and it'll be back before the board for final approval at a later date. I do note that we own this property jointly with the city of New Bern, who has already given its approval to this offer amount, so.
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving the transaction authorizing upset bid process with parcel number 8-012-216. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Up and farther.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, next item is the petition of citizens for general topics. We do ask the Speaker be mindful of the three minutes that you will be allowed, you will have a timer, and we welcome your comments. Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, sir, the first person would be Robin Spivey.
Miss Spivey, if you will, when you come, if you would just give us your address, please, for the record. Thank you.
Okay, I'm at 2840 NC Highway 101 in Havlock. I've come to talk with you tonight to request that the Commissioners review and amend the ordinance for Article 7 signs, off-premises signs. I was told that there hasn't been a substantial review in this ordinance since 2008, 2009. Unfortunately, I am the recipient of a billboard. My neighbor leased the corner of his lot out to a billboard company, and they have erected a sign that is feet away from my driveway. In this ordinance, there's no setback requirements for signs, there's no, like, survey requirements for signs. Basically, he put it up and now it's my responsibility to prove that he's on my property at my expense. So I'm requesting that y'all review this and hopefully make a change that billboards do not belong next to people's homes. There's, I had a handout. My house is not the only instance that there's a billboard right next to the house and it's just, it's discouraging because I've done everything I can to improve my house. Now he's put this billboard there. No one wants to buy a house with a billboard next to the driveway. So there goes my property value. So like, am I just the only one? Too bad, so sad that, you know, my property's downgraded, but, you know, the sign man don't live in Craven County. My neighbor, I don't see his taxes going up because he now has this billboard. I'm the only one paying for the billboard. And like I said, I believe it's on my property and at this point with the process, the only thing I can do is hire a surveyor at my expense. When the documents he provided to get the permit was from the county GIS, but it's not enough for me to contest it. There's no appeal process, there's no any kind of, I have not had anybody from the planning department discuss it with me. I've sent numerous emails, they're in my handout. I got one reply. Today, I spoke with the planning department, had some good dialogue, but up until today...
You did provide your handout to the clerk. Okay, she'll get it to us. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the second person is Sabrina Bangle.
Good evening, Ms. Bangle.
Good evening.
If you will, share with us your address typically.
I will. 329A Middle Street, New Bern. I'm speaking tonight to ask that the decision to change the name of the New Bern Riverfront Convention Center be reconsidered. I'm also here to go on the record to be sure that the citizens of Craven County have the facts that were omitted from the discussion to make this change. I was the chairman of the Convention Center Committee that worked with the city of New Bern, the city of Havlock, and Craven County to build and locate a convention center in the city limits of New Bern, a tourist center in the city limits of Havlock. The committee was made up of local leaders that included both city managers, as well as the county manager, and the county was also represented at that time by Commissioner Chuck Tyson. A study was done that determined the locations and the naming and was agreed upon by all three governmental bodies. The name New Bern Riverfront Convention Center was done specifically to market the location on the river, which in 2000 was the only center located on a river in North Carolina. Adding New Bern was done to complement the marketing of the city as a premier tourist destination in the state. This has served us well in attracting meetings and conventions these past 22 years. Since August 2000, the county has collected close to 28 million in occupancy taxes that went to the marketing and promotion of New Bern and Havlock as tourist destinations, as well as the operation and debt service of the convention center, which included 97,000 per year that went to Havlock towards the debt service on the tourist center. In speaking to Chairman Jones, he relayed that the county had to subsidize the operation of the convention center around $7 million over the past 22 years of operation. As anyone in the tourism industry knows, convention centers are economic development centers that generate sales tax and economic impact dollars that help keep taxes low for local citizens, so that money was well spent. I handed, I have handed to the clerk information regarding the sales tax alone that has been received by the county for tourism-related expenditures, which in many cases was driven by the convention center and marketing done by the TDA. That number is in excess of $49 million cumulatively since 2005. That was as far back as I could get it. Also included in the most recent impact of tourism on Craven County and the money it generates produced by the state of North Carolina, as well as occupancy taxes collected since 2006. I believe many of you have received calls, emails, and letters from citizens voicing their concern with your recent action. The topic deserved to be debated before the public. I want to thank Commissioner Booker for voting to do the right thing and not the political thing. Many of your constituents in all county, in all, in all corners of the county work in the tourism industry and benefit from the marketing, marketing of tourism, New Bern as a tourist destination, trying to go fast. Commissioners Booker, Mark, and Mitchell found New Bern, visited and moved here due to the marketing New Bern has done. Sorry, I can't finish.
Thank you. We appreciate it. You did provide a...
I provided all that and a copy of mine will be...
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. All right. All right, Commissioner?
Can I ask, because I came in late?
Okay.
I gave the clerk.
Okay, Commissioners, let me just ask, if you will, is any objection to allowing?
That's fine.
All right, I hear no objection. Yes, sir, you may come on. If you will, please state your name and address for the record.
I gave everyone a copy of this.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm just going to read from what I have.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Edwin Vargas, 119 Randomwood Lane, New Bern, North Carolina. What I would like to discuss is an idea that is way overdue. Under each county elected official, name, a link can be done of the items that have been accomplished during that year. This way, a citizen can locate their county's commissioners and read what has been done. This information can be sent from the commissioner to the county clerk for updates. Take, for example, roads in a certain member's district. In August 2018, the year of Hurricane Florence, a forum was conducted at Oranger Hall, Craven Community College, and a moderator asked an individual, what is your number one item that you will do? They stated road improvements. That was four years ago and the following roads have not been repaired or resurfaced. Highway 17 from Rem's Volunteer Fire Station, east and west, to the Palace Motel meets Neuse Boulevard. Rocky River Road to Deerfield Subdivision. Trent Road from Riverside Chrysler to Red Robin Lane. Red Robin Lane to Simmons Street. Simmons Street to Oaks Road. Hazel Avenue, Elizabeth Avenue. You cannot state you will do these things and nothing is done. There was an attempt to build one of the largest home developments in Riverbend history, a hundred-acre, 400 homes on Old Pollockville Road, which was a disaster. Like a vacuum cleaner, the idea sucked. The water situation in Riverbend is horrible and the citizens protested at the town hall and the development was pulled out. I did not see one elected official in the county discuss or even show up. Discussions without solutions mean nothing. You as an elected official can be involved in a hundred committees state things about Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point and cannot see Havlock from your assigned district. Some of us know more about Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point since they have worked on the base for 25 years, which is me. Yes, jobs are important, but when you state road improvements are more important in your district and nothing is done, this is just a soundbite to the citizens you, that will vote you in. I recommend this idea on the Craven County website, under each elected official, a link under their name of items that can be accomplished during a specific year. This will inform citizens since town hall meetings have not worked or conducted by Craven County elected officials.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to the County Manager's Report. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Pleasure to be with you tonight. I, Don kind of introduced it for me a few minutes ago, but I'm really pleased, for the first time in Craven County's history, we have a county engineer, which you guys approved in the budget last year. We're real excited. As Mr. Hodges said, it felt like it was Christmas morning when Dwayne showed up, but I want to recognize Dwayne Alleygood. Dwayne's our new county engineer. He comes to us from the private sector, but before that, he was with DOT and worked with the county a whole lot on projects. Dwayne, I'm going to give it just, you second just a second.
Thank you, Jack. So I really appreciate this opportunity. I've been in Craven County since December of 1994, raised my family here and have had a great working environment, a great family life, and just have loved this community. So this is an awesome opportunity for me to work in Craven County with the staff here. You've got a great team, as you well know. The Board, I know you know as well, obviously, your accomplishments. You know, from what I see, looking at different counties, you've got a Board that works great together for the interest of the citizens and I look forward to being a part of that and I thank you for the opportunity and look forward to working with each of you. Thank you.
Mr. Alleygood, I would just say on behalf of this Board, we've got a lot of confidence in you, there's no doubt. This Board has put you on different boards, Health Board, and you serve the citizens of this county well. Welcome aboard, we're glad to have you. Glad you're a part of the team.
Yes, welcome aboard.
He was probably the best engineer on the Transportation Department.
Sure was.
That's right. We're excited to have Dwayne. I know Don and Chad have been on board, and with Gene last week, so Gene says, drinking from the fire hose a little bit here. Commissioners, I'm really pleased and one of the things I think this Board does really well is you work together as a, as a complete Board and we've put some priorities in place four years ago that have meant a lot and we've worked really hard as a Board and as a staff to accomplish these. I'm really pleased to announce to the public, and it may have been out in press release from the state, but we were awarded a $4 million grant last week. Great grants are expanding broadband in rural areas. We'll get about 2,200 homes covered in our application. We're really excited about it. Now remember, this, this isn't people who have bad service, this are people that don't have any service at all. So we're getting, we're getting east and west here, you know, and there's some areas that we're covered. This was probably the number one priority of this Board of Commissioners over the last four years. There's other opportunities coming. This is step one, but we got some other opportunities. Gene and Steve and I met with a representative from the state last week, so we're really excited about the future on that. Also, I said it was our week last week, we also were awarded a $500,000 grant, which is the max, from the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. This will go toward our new nature park on Airport Road. It was land that was purchased by the Coastal Land Trust and we also had a large donation from Bass Pro Shops to develop that site. $500,000 is what we requested and that will get us way down the road and at this point, by using the, the value of the property that Coastal Land Trust will get us, we won't have at this time any county dollars in it. We'll just maximize the grants that we have. We're really excited because what this will do is add in bike trails, hiking trails, and a paddle trail from Creekside to here, which is something we haven't had yet, so we'll have embark and de-bark in two places and be a real exciting addition to that area. So I know Commissioner Booker, you're excited about that over there. It's a beautiful piece of property. If you hadn't had a few minutes ago by there, it's absolutely wonderful and it keeps it protected for all, so. Mr. Chairman, that's all I had, so unless you have questions for me.
Questions for the County Manager.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioners report. Commissioner Mark, we'll start with you this evening.
Well, besides my district responsibilities, meeting in Bridgeton on the 13th and meeting in Fairfield on the 20th, the Hospital Board and TDA. The only thing I'd like to say to the Commissioners is, the county does not own a road in this county. They're all owned by the state. And some of the roads, I believe in New Bern, are owned by the city, but all the roads in the county are owned by the state, so have no fear. We really can't get in there and do anything about them other than ask for it to be done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner McKay?
I have a thing, anything else, the Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't, I only have one thing to report and most of the Commissioners know it, but I'd like to tell this to the people of the county as well. The state of North Carolina is sponsoring its first-ever Association of Defense Communities Conference in Raleigh on the 27th of September. ADC is a national organization. This is the first time we have had this conference in North Carolina. It is the first on the East Coast and it emphasizes the fact that defense is the second largest economic sector in the state and it puts us on the, on the map for the defense industry. So I know we have several people who are attending, a number from this county. This is a great step forward for the state and it is a privilege that Craven County can be such a big participant.
Thank you. Appreciate your leadership there. Commissioner Lainer?
Yes, sir, I have one thing. On our last meeting, we talked about the HAVLAC program and I reached out, went to the Congress in Colorado. We had conversations last week. I had a call from Fayetteville, that point Trump down there. We're in negotiations now, I'm negotiating, we're in discussion with how we move forward and just, it's a teleconference, a medical teleconference for our veterans and trying to get that located here for one of our FPLCs. So any veteran who has an appointment, if they're VA doctors, can come in. There are all those, we have a teleconference, our people there. It's not a done deal, but at least we're talking and if they want to know more about the coordination, so it's moving forward. We started this last year and at the Congress, I finally got people interested involved and we reached back after.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Commissioner Lainer. Commissioner Smith?
That's, sir.
All right. Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, a couple of things. Number one, since our last meeting, we had a tour. County Manager, Don, Chad, Lauren, and Steve Astor and myself spent a couple hours driving all the roads in James City and we were pleased to see that some more progress has been made. Some more homes that were empty and derelict have come down. We're going to get a count and see where we're at from when we started this program, which was just a little over a year ago. And it's kind of exciting, at a town hall meeting, my, my point to the people in Bridgeton is everybody should be able to have a safe, healthy environment where they live, as well as a good quality of life. Some of the people in Bridgeton, and I'm sure this is true of many other communities, were living and taking good care of their home, but right next door was a, a drug house. And we've encouraged the people there, if they are aware of anybody dealing drugs, call the sheriff, let's get them in there and find out what we can do about it. So it was a very encouraging visit and kudos to these guys because they, they've been working at it and we're going to keep at it. The only other thing I'll mention is we had a really difficult day today in that we had a tractor trailer go over the bridge into the Trent River and ended up upside down, I understand. I don't know the condition of the driver, but that was a tragic situation. And then a few hours later, at the Taberna Light, there was a T-bone collision and a lady was killed. So we need that, it's going to be frustrating for the next couple of years with the highway construction, but this is just one more reason why we've got to get the 70 corridor updated. Somebody ran a light. We don't know, I don't know who it was, whether it was the truck or the car, but anyway, we have one less citizen living in our county tonight as a result. That's all I have.
Chair, Dana, what about the Old Chapel Highway, Highway 70? You got the curve now in your district.
I'm sorry, what?
Old Chapel Highway?
Yeah.
And Highway 70?
Yeah.
Can't go there anymore. You asked, have to get it done?
Yeah. That was done for safety, so people can't pull out and cross over, so, yeah.
All right. Commissioners, I just want to make you aware, in the western part of the county, we've got our fun part of our year and that is Fireman's Day. Town of Coast City will have Fireman's Day, September 24th, parade at 10:00 a.m. I invite any of you to come and join me. I've told them that reserve you a place up front, so if you do, you don't have to let me know, but if you do desire, desire to come, we'd love to have you. That's September 24th, Saturday. It begins at 10 o'clock, try to be there at 9:30 if you will. And afterward, they got some good barbecue and chicken. Then the, October the 1st is the Dover Fireman's Day. They will not have a parade, but they will be having barbecue and chicken. And I, and I just stress this, you know, we talk about our rural fire departments a lot and try to be supportive of their efforts, but some of these rural fire departments are working very hard, try to raise money, subsidize their budgets, and, and these are two of them that, that are doing that. And I know Commissioner Mark has departments over on his side and, and other across the county and so we appreciate all of these volunteers for their service. All right, Commissioners, are there any other items to bring before us before we go into closed session this evening? All right, here none, we do have a closed session and we're requested to go pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A and 5, to establish the public body's negotiating position for acquisition of real property or employment contracts, or instruct staff or agents about the negotiation. Do I have a motion that we...
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Or in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioners, we will take a 10-minute recess to allow staff to prepare the room and I will come back at that time.